Hello, Hall Order, the county council workshop, July twenty second, five P M. Roll call. Toby Holland.
Michelle Ile, Jackie Hines.
Toby Alvin, Dave Paradise.
Sam Floyd.
Justin Jackson, David Ror.
Justin Martin.
Uh, business, twenty twenty four road improvement project bid review in session.
Uh, Mayor Council, we received the bids on July ninth. And it looked like we probably had a bit of a shortfall as far as funding goes to that. I believe just in bond proceeds, which normally be used to pay for the roads that are listed in that road improvement plan, about three hundred and forty thousand dollars left there. And then you might have additional forty or ninety, ninety two, ninety two thousand dollars in the local aid. So we need to probably decide which project, if any, we're going to do this year. And then also discuss, um, something like Clementa for next year, that's kind of a big project. And if you don't have it planned, you can pivot to that, so. Questions or things to add? I'm not sure, so.
That's second, that's scheduled B, the Rock Brook, they've, they've all signed B.
They have not signed yet, those went out last week to be signed. If those are returned signed, that project could possibly be done because we will be able to reimburse for that project from the residents. If we do not get those signed back, I would say make that project as well. Obviously, we're not going to do it for them for free, and we can try again at some other point in future if they want to try again. If we don't get those signed to residents back by the next council meeting, we're not good. The next cheapest one is about two hundred thousand for the industrial park. Can we do the roads that are within there, um, I believe? And we thought we maybe do those just because of the highway toll project that's planned for next year and get that done before, um, that project goes through, so that we can. You ready?
Yeah, I mean, that, it would be nice just to button that up also, this ain't just streets, this is curb. Any, um, storm stories much, you're sort of one of the tech basins, pretty much.
You have castings.
Castings now. And obviously a mill and overlay. In the industrial park, I believe that's a thicker, uh, tar in there, but it's pretty bad. Be nice to have our roads new, we're going to butt up the new roads next year, but. Because the state's only got a tar in so far. And if anybody driven down that A B C entrance, or a company contractor, by a lift station, new sign there, it could be a shot.
And we will also have a new business in there pretty soon. Um, they're working on getting stuff together for permanent and that kind of thing, I'm assuming they want to build silver here. And that's going to be that first property, when they turn onto the Decker on the west side, so right by the lift station there, so. That'd be. A good showing that that's done, so that they're not running on humble payment, trying to get through.
What was the, what was the total amount with everything together that we had for this?
So the three hundred and forty thousand with the bond proceeds.
Yep.
That to spend, and then ninety two, um, and it's for local aid. It's state, we basically that is never guaranteed any year, nineteen and twenty three. Um, we did get the first half of forty six thousand, uh, just last week, the other half would return till December.
What do you market you use?
And it has to be street improvements, um, that is part of the, uh, rules to using it and getting it.
Right now with more than forty six, so.
Four, yeah, forty six of it, so the other forty six to come in December. When I looked it up and was researching it a little bit, it does say that for twenty five and twenty six, they are once again hoping for those funds at a higher interest or a higher rate to be paid out. But no one knows, nothing's guaranteed at this point, just like nothing was received in twenty three.
So what happens if we don't do any of these projects, we lose that?
Nope, it's deposited into a fund and it sits there until we use it. It won't, yeah, it's already in the bank.
So out of all of these, which one do you think is the most impressive?
Which one's the worst? Does it hill by far? But it's the most expensive. I mean, it's the oldest road. And it's got most residential properties on it, right? Quite a few out there. But I believe dozen hills and industrial park, I all went in at the same time, so the roads are definitely older than Rock Brook.
I, I'd rather look at the industrial park, you know, and if Rock Brook comes back and says, yeah, we'll do it. I'd do that fifty two thousand there, but. I, we need to, we need to, we need to plan out the other two.
We got any questions or any comments, anybody who was on Rock Brook or what?
Uh, well, yes, about, I mean, about what?
Just about the, the project in general, like if there's anybody to call and make any modifications, like we're asking not to do that, so.
No, I did talk to all the residents, I either talked to them or had them give me a confirmation and writing that they were interested in, in seeing this project go forward. So like I said, I sent out agreements last week, and if they still want to go forward, um. That's up to them.
And it has to be a hundred percent?
Yes. But I think the thing, they have to agree to have their property, right? And that that's not, you know, we don't get one summon one year, right? So we're looking to keep you on the path over ten years as we presented her. So you have to gain an interest on it, but it's not like just fifty two thousand dollars.
I, I agree with David, though, I think that if we can get one of them done, we, we did it done. But yeah, we're going to have to have a conversation on what that's going to look like to get the rest of this done, because, I mean, from my recollection, we're now going to be a few years behind on our ten year road improvement plan.
Yeah, there's, I think the whole thing is, just from what I've seen a little bit, you know, in the direct of the two years, it's just this kind of grew so fast, putting so many roads in the, the budgets for maintaining never really jumped up.
And, uh, we, yeah, would like to see some of the, the bonds fall off before we take out more bonds for street projects, just because we kind of have a lot of money for housing and bonds or debt for street projects. So I think twenty twenty seven, a couple of them have get, will have fallen off by then, and then we could think about, um, doing something else or maybe using some comment. The other thing what we can look at doing too is with the capital approval, I mean, you know, we can look at, I might just pull up on the screen for the budget. So if you look at the twenty twenty five budget, that's kind of what's been discussed or pre-approved to by before. So starting for twenty five, we're planning to do a hundred thousand per street. You know, that's something to think about increasing it over the next couple of years to pump up that fund to help with future projects. That's an idea, if they're doing a hundred, we discuss something else. Or twenty five, twenty six, I don't know how many years. Just as a thought.
And the only way to like catch up and know we got.
Well, that's just the. Well, Clementa is slated to be done, that has been slated to be done, kind of got hooked around because of the L R I P applications. And then we did get the V N R grant for that, so it would be nice to be able to do, do that at least up to right tail. I can't remember exactly how much that was, but I know it was steady.
Well, that's got to be a complete radical shock, that's not a mill and overlay on the road. Or it's horrible, too.
It's reclaimed, reclaimed all the way.
Oh, reclaimed, but you know, the utilities aren't going to get fixed. Reclaiming all the way to dirt, pack that reclaimed all the way. So.
When would you come first, Steve?
This is. And usually in this part, we don't assess what to do on overlay, but I guess we didn't assess any projects so far, but that's kind of a killer to the street budget, too.
And we done that for the big projects.
Yeah, I mean, even a little bit would have been nice, but I mean, it's done, it's over with, but.
Yeah, um. That is what it is.
And then on top of that, I want you guys to keep in mind, um, it is recommended to seal coat shortly to, at least no later than three years after the tar's done with. Look how much new streets we put in. There is no money to even do that. Nothing. The whole thing of it is, is that sandwich layer retard, you want to keep the oil inside of it. When that thing dries out, the gear backs, splits, start falling apart, cracking. You want to crack fill it, it's seal coating. Now, street seal coating is different, they put like granite or, parking lot seal coating, just seal coating, right? So. But there's not even enough money in there to do the streets we just got done two years ago. And if you wait five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten years on it, you'll be doing a mill and overlay instead of a seal coat. So I think, uh, we've got to come up with some kind of plan to chill with deep up these projects. And you're only adding more streets. Seven with the Nastman, is going to be a new street? Uh, preserve, is there people being new street? Just saying. We can't operate off the two thousand and seven budget anymore, I mean, we've got to get pushed way up. I don't know, are you guys going to do that, it's your decision.
One thing that I wanted to point out, um, there's, it's worth noting too, is the bids that we received for this current project were extremely favorable. And so much so that the, the two minutes patch, the two minutes, uh, item that it buy the ton that we received during the twenty twenty three project, it was eighty nine dollars per ton across the lane. This year was at seventy four, it was just over seventy four, so there's, there's a, a fourteen dollars in savings there, which doesn't happen really often when it goes down in the previous year.
So what you're saying is most likely we rebid any of these, they're going to be way higher than what they have. Well, the nice part about it is we have the plans drawn up, they're there.
We don't have the funds, we don't.
You got the funds to do the whole project. And that's kind of why we instructed Tac to put these out of schedules to be knew, that this is most likely going to happen.
Do we want to do any of the individual ones on here?
I would say we do, we start your part. Schedule B and schedule B only, they sign for, I think, I think schedule B is for sure for me. And I live in Fazan, I know how terrible it is, but we can all, hopefully.
Well, um, I think that's, we're giving that then?
Well, I just want you guys to kind of put in mind how would you, you could budget up?
Well, and that's the, I think that's the next topic, is finance and budget discussion.
I told you the recommendations to do schedule B, and then the, as long as we're pretty happy with that.
With G M H, obviously.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the real ones that did, uh, um, Hill Street, York Street. Garden Circle. They did the mill and overlay there. We got Whippy back. He's helping plan again. Are you happy to see me? I don't care if you're in the long enough, buddy. He's a good guy, though. Roughly.
Was maybe under the Clementa, remind myself how much that was, or how much they're actually.
Yeah, I don't remember off the top of my head, but. Off the top of my head, yeah, what that is. I mean, because we had an estimate for just what was within the city, and then we had an estimate for what was within, how much it would have been to.
Were they going to re, re, uh, go after that grant next, the twenty twenty?
L R I P?
Yeah.
It, it sounds like, I mean, from where we're at and all, that they were, uh, soliciting additional projects for the funding for that, so.
I need somebody.
Do you want to discuss, just stay on the street improvements portion and kind of discuss how much to run first, or take that discussion as before? Um, so basically, bond proceeds for the locally, four hundred and thirty two, that's those two projects, will be needed, that will be about a hundred and eighty thousand per street. At a hundred for twenty twenty five, so we're looking at two hundred and eighty thousand, I'm not sure. Uh, if you might give me some ideas, some recommendations, and I can kind of see how it will affect things in the end, regardless, we still don't have an L G A amount for twenty five, so. So leaning on that to really button things up, but you know, do we jump to two hundred, do we go to a hundred and fifty?
Is there, what do we have on our C I T? Like, what, what is our, a project that we're scheduled to look at for this next year with the?
Which one do I?
It's street recon plan Clementa.
I just meant overall, like this year we did Carver Field. What is the, what is the, you know, the dream project we're looking at for next year?
Uh, well, just bringing that twenty one to twenty five street project on, is that what you're proposing?
No, I'm just talking about just in general, within the city budget, what we are looking at on for a project next year.
I, I don't have any information, because from what I understand, it was like the bond for twenty one to twenty five laid out, which part of the, we done each year, the best man in the mall. I don't know what the twenty five project costs.
Street reconstruction and area four, from what I said, five hundred and forty three dollars a dollar. But again, like, I don't fully understand, this was the one you bonded for?
So that was in, in twenty twenty one, when we, um, when the city did the five point eight million dollar street bond, it was for those projects from twenty one to twenty five, that's for those funds.
Who'd be having?
Because three hundred and forty thousand.
Yeah.
Less everything we're paying out, you have a hundred and eighty.
Well, I, I must not have the right one here.
That was the one, it came in last week. It didn't sound like that, that bond was going to pay for everything. She, she almost thought that it was going to get taken out by the twenty twenty one street project. But the way it's laid out in there.
Right.
I think they came in well underestimated of cost, yeah. What if we were, she, she almost said it sounded like we were fortunate, be able to do other projects aside from twenty twenty? Uh, it could be amounts that they included in that paperwork, it does add up to five point eight, but we, uh, just they, project came in over budget. So that's why we don't have as much money as they thought we'd have.
And so we are going to have to increase it, and I mean, maybe we should just look at two fifty. Where do we get the other hundred and fifty thousand, that's the question, though. That's what I was asking about, other projects we're looking at doing, the money we can move around.
I would guesstimate that you'll probably get another hundred thousand from local or state aid again next year for just the streets, so. I would think that's a pretty good, if they're already seeing that right now, then you're thinking the percentage that they're going to pay out, I think it's a pretty good. I shouldn't think that too, long as it's years, but I think we'll, we should be getting at least a hundred thousand in more streets in the next year. So I'm looking at how we can pay out half in July and half in November.
I don't want to throw a lot of help in the, the state government figuring out when they're going to do all that. And I think it'd be nice for us to be able to have more set aside, like Danny said, to take care of seal coating.
Well, I get a hundred, I mean, you guys approve the hard value here, just from my projects of seal coating and crack filling, which. I mean, I still have it this year, but we're going to do some, and we got it. That's for everything that public works field needs to be done in within that year. So how much that will get moved by, we're working on quotes on some seal building and crack filling and some manhole lowering before the snow flies. But we chew it up every year. I think last year we lowered twenty five manholes, picked some intersections and it was gone. Hundred thousand ain't a lot yet, it doesn't go very far. It sounds like a lot of money, but when it comes to firing it out, you know, we don't do that in-house here. We just go, what would take with that, I'm curious. A lot more equipment, probably more men, and then a contract with an asphalt company, just go blow the asphalt. And you got a two-roller, guys are not around that stuff. I'll tell them like this is something that.
I'm just, right, curious, yeah.
So there is money to play with there, I mean, a hundred thousand out of my, my public work street budget.
But we always use that.
We always use it up on repairs, and we feel like we need to.
We can't rob.
We rob. Right, I'm just saying, you know, I, but going back to Clementa thing, and next year, I want to say that project is over a million dollars.
I think, I think, I think the bigger amount included, you know, that portion, but honestly, that means like two million, I think for our project.
And then you have to seal coat it for you.
You're supposed to, I don't know. I, I heard that you have to look at three to five, depending upon all the roads doing. The guy, I've talked to car guys in town, they said, if you have the money to seal coat them after the first year. The sooner you get it done, the better off you are, but obviously you have work to budget for it, so. But you're looking at longevity of the road itself.
Well, there's only more traffic, and there's only going to be more traffic.
I mean, that, dozen hills, Aston Lane, Clementa, I mean, they're all just going hot. So my suggestion, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand, if you're going to beef it up, I'd even go higher. But you can always come back down if you catch up on things, but.
That's my thing, is whether, what are we, are we planning, are we planning Clementa, are we planning these other ones, what are we planning?
Well, that's the plan.
Yeah, again, we can't do all of them.
Right, that's the plan, was Clementa, but.
I mean, that's the thing.
Because of the grant.
We have enough for Clementa next year.
And now, yeah.
We might have to. Twenty twenty six.
So who would?
Field thirty is a twenty twenty six.
Who would plan Clementa for twenty six? You'd have to break ground by that point.
So you have a thirty twenty three. Bennett?
Yep. Trail.
Not with, not with the trail.
But can we budget for the trails, if we budget another, one of these street projects rather than a million dollar street project for next year?
I'm just worried because I know we kind of promised to accommodate people, but it's, it should have been done last year.
I, I understand.
No, I know, but, um. I mean, realistically, we should probably be, wait, a little more funding, but then, like, there's still going to be more things to be done. So three, we have, we don't want to.
You remember that, I could play out, but, you know. So, you know, I mean, those two, those two years, middle of those two projects was a killer. They needed to be done, don't get me wrong, but just, I just, I'm not trying to, I'll be blunt, it should have, some of it should have been assessed. But, because usually when I talk to others, most towns assess on major projects like that, but don't assess on mill and overlay projects like this. You're going to kill the budget, puts it further back than that, I mean, with this.
Well, I mentioned twenty twenty one project, it was because a lot of people had private property, you know, when we sell all the, the lines, that stuff like that.
It's a long time coming, I mean, no doubt it needs to be done, and kind of puts us behind the baseball here, but. No, we're way behind, and I, I just feel like with everything, when it comes to streets, we're playing a ninety game catch up, I mean, just, it's non-stop.
And then, and then when you, when you guys started not to do it, that's the, um, you know, it was kind of like, well, if you're going to impact that, we're down the road. And here we are, down the road. If we go over two hundred and fifty thousand.
That's still like, to me, I mean, yeah, we put out there, it's great, we're going to have to hold it for a couple of years, probably.
When would that put us on? I don't have final numbers, that, we don't have final number, O G A numbers yet. Um, I can probably get a rough, I mean, usually August is when O G A comes out for next year. I probably just place the numbers in there and figure something out.
We didn't even know what the tax would pass.
Yes.
Which they won't. Unfortunately, they haven't been getting that up from the end of September the last couple of years.
Well, usually that's before we went up to, usually September, so I know we're way hopping ahead of the game here at this supply.
Well, it's fine, if we need to catch up on roads, I think we should look at other things that maybe we could set aside for a few years that we don't need to do.
So then you tell me, Clementa, which one do you feel is last on your list out of all these projects we've just talked about? I'll, I'll use up my hundred thousand on seal coat and crack filling every year. That, that'll, I don't know how it's going to help me catch up to what I need to get it to be, but I'm going to use that every year, so.
How much do you think we're estimating to, to seal coat the, the road we can put up?
I don't, I don't have that, we're supposed to be getting through the year to get to work. I don't have any idea.
Any idea?
No. Ballpark, well, every year changes, so, um, oil prices and how busy they are, and how much crack filling the road actually needs. So I wouldn't have, I'm not even going to ballpark an idea for you, I have no idea. So I wouldn't have, I'm not even gonna ballpark an idea for you, I have no idea. Till we get some quotes in here. But we're, we're gonna do the, the millerway, just getting sealed coated where Crystal and Biddy got done, wasn't that six years ago now? That's what we're looking to get quoted on. And I'll have them give me a quote for that other stuff when they're in town, but. Plus, it's, it's hard to get them in here to get quotes, and it's the busy time of season. But.
That'll be funny, because I think those were the chief contractors on the, the, that's when it ended plan and, and they were still a hundred grand.
Oh, yeah. Two hundred, two hundred fifty, three hundred.
We're, uh, we have the, the, my, I guess, lack of better term than I told them they did. That last year, two years ago, that the roads that were in the worst condition.
Do you know about it this year?
We've, we have, we have one in the process.
So that's the plan.
Management plan of the, what, two years new we can have?
That was, that was with lane, that was like right before COVID. And that thing is way on lack. We've done some projects way ahead and, yeah, it's, it needs to be reassessed.
We use as, as staff and do all the readings and.
And let's be honest, that's why we picked these.
All right, and that's, that, that's the answer to your question, at least from me, Dan, and then I would want to see what, what they are looking at, you know, because that's obviously gonna give us a better idea of just like driving around looking at roads.
Well, in your payment plan, it had certain streets of Pheasant Hill we had done, which totally popped in my mind. We don't do.
I don't do the whole thing.
Exactly. So that's why we had these bid off, but in my eyes, if you go by age, Pheasant Hills needs to be done. But obviously, we don't have enough money for it, right? My mom is about the same age, that also, I mean, you guys are agreeing on it, so we kind of took the hint of that plan and kind of came up with our own, and we talked about, and that's why me, me and Bo and Nathan, this guy. Whoever else was out here during the assessment of these projects, that's why we did these in favor this year. But Clemente is on the docket too, I mean, you guys have been talking, it's been brought up at council meeting.
With Pheasant, is there a way to break that up? Uh, not, not as far as, you know, part of the Pheasant, but I know that there's sidewalks that are marked, is there, would you sidewalks first and then streets the next year, or is that all has to be done at once?
That'll be a question for him. Most likely, a contractor is not gonna want it.
I, I think you're gonna end up seeing a lot higher pricing if you kind of put the project down, you know, just from mobilization and.
There's a lot of its curb replacement too, and you gotta, you know, if, if you just did all the concrete work, you knocked the curb off, then you have to repair the road, but if you're gonna dig up next year, it's nothing. Because they gotta cut back in the road and repair the curb, and then you're gonna have to fix it, so it's up there for a year and then come back and dig it back up. So. With Clemente being part of this, I would say these projects, but then, I mean, these ones are the most pressing ones, without doubt, including Clemente. And then Aspen Lane is totally behind it, Seventh Street, all the rest of them. Fifth Street, Seventh Street, Sixth Street, they're all.
Can we start with the thing on down, is what would be a known overlay that's going to be a complete reconstruction? You know, I mean, trying to alter their.
Well, these are, um, all these on this sheet with bid are millerway and then reconstructed concrete, and then you get to, you fix your concrete structures on the side before you put the tar in it, otherwise you're gonna have to cut back in itself.
And all renovations that'll come from the product, is that when we be able to kind of push?
Yeah, it will be.
You would, you what with?
It will be, uh, uh, I recommend seal coat versus the, yeah, there'll be different types of maintenance, so seal coat, you have your millerway areas and like your, your reclaiming overlay or distribution areas.
As far as fully constructed, not much left in the town, but there's a, your area, but yeah. Yeah, there ain't much, so. As far as fully fill these, like these projects were.
Would people get, uh, involved for that? Oh, oh, the pavement management.
Yeah.
Probably the early fall. Do we potentially look at with, if these are Schedule B and Schedule B go-through that we look at assessing on road projects since it's Schedule B to start?
I know that's gonna be a spicy.
It is spicy, but no, but I mean, like, let's, let's, again, let's look at it, what, what.
You're gonna have people coming into that council meeting immediately. That you didn't do this project, and now you can't do that. So, I mean, you can. They're gonna be coming in, they'll be.
It's spicy for sure, but I mean, it's not like an industrial park.
Um, that's not a cool utility reconstruct though.
I know what you're saying.
Usually, most, I'm just saying, most cities don't.
One way or another, it's getting paid for.
Right. This is where you'd have to increase budget taxes a bit a lot.
No, I guess, that's where. I'm looking at, how do we involve?
Hey, your councilman, do you wanna do it for, 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 your councilman? Do it.
That's not the easiest thing.
No, I understand, I mean, this is the hardest part, right? I mean, no matter what you do.
Somebody's gonna start it.
You're not gonna be favored when it comes to the increase in budget, that's substantial.
Whether, whether you increase taxes or start a setting, doesn't matter, we're gonna get, we're gonna get the.
Right. But if you ask the people that live in those areas, I mean, not, not about assessment, it's the road needs to be fixed, they will say, yeah.
Then, then if we don't do anything with the road, we're gonna be dealt, so.
Right, either way.
We live that, we live down on, on industrial park.
Well, you'll be assessing your business.
And who, who drives big ass truck in that industrial park? And wears and tears on those roads.
Right? I mean, that's a possibility, if you wanna go that route. That's true. Whatever, I just wanna see the roads fixed, whatever way you wanna come up with the money, that's up to you guys. Honestly. It obviously saves a lot of wear and tear on our block drive too, I mean, well, they're. Nice, I mean, not new, just smooth, smooth.
I'm not, I'm not saying a hundred percent like that, I'm saying.
No, I, I agree, right, right, you know.
We need to really look at, and.
Percentages, but.
If we can break out what it is that looks like an assessment, I'm not talking every, you know, a seal coat, but maybe there's, you know, when it comes to Pheasant, we need to look at a little reconstruct.
Again, we're not replacing utilities out there.
Just, you know, I get it, I live out there, I'm, I'm literally opening myself up for assessment. I think it's gonna be pretty difficult for you to assess since they did, it's, it's, they wanted an assessment on twenty twenty one improvement project.
I think, I think he's correct.
I've been in some assessment hearings and there've been, people come out of the woodwork and they bring up past precedents that have been set and it's very difficult for them to get through that. I'm not trying.
No, I'd rather talk about it than we never talked about it at all.
And every, every other, most other communities, and especially hearing from all your staff that I work with and that both of me. And all of these other communities are trying to figure out how to get out of assessments, like the people hate them.
Well, but you're like telling me it's gonna make them harder and harder and more expensive for us to do them, so, you know, another big, and a, a curb, special, especially, a special would be me and curb a hardball.
Oh, then forget it. Might get more money.
Yeah.
That's all you had to say. Increasing taxes.
Be one way or another, let's be real, they're paying for it one way or another.
I don't know, it's, it's, it's either, is it coming from the whole or is it coming from the?
Is it coming from the whole community to fix this area of the meeting, or the, yeah, right.
I wish we all present, I wish we could make sure we all do a test for all of them.
Yeah, that's fine, and I'm, yeah. Uh, since we are talking about budget stuff, uh, can we look at doing a budget meeting with our preliminary budget, which we have to, preliminary wants to come anyway? Um, can we look at doing one of those meetings prior to the September council meeting?
Sure. One, one third of August, um, then you get into later day, maybe.
Yeah, I, I would wanna do it, I mean, if we did, September, before the meeting, and it would take us, yeah, probably an hour and a half. Send back campaign stuff.
I mean, otherwise, we'd give you a little, it's like, on the week one, maybe a week or two maybe. Uh, speaking of the, the member council meeting will be on Tuesday, October.
Cause it's the biggest people's day.
I think that's the day. Just letting you know if there's anything particular, do you wanna see all that meeting or just overall, or?
No, I mean, I think it'd be good to just go through everything to see, especially for travel roads, you know, what, what we need to.
I was hoping to have more.
Keep planning forward.
I was hoping to have more of a closed up budget idea of this meeting, but it's not.
Anything else on finance or budget?
On the street portion? And the other, oh, sorry, yep, I thought the right story to separate. Um, so utility rates. Um, I know it's not in your package, it's up on the screen, uh, so basically, we've got twenty-three rates. There were twenty, twenty-four current rates, so I know it's kind of small, but you can see the percentage or the increase there from twenty-three to twenty-four. For someone using five gallons, five gallon gallons, nine gallon gallons, maybe thirteen gallon gallons. Um, so basically, you know, we've already gone from six to twelve, current water, sewer stays the same, wastewater stays the same, storm, sewer stays the same. So basically, it was just that water increase, and then, um, the unit rate. So looking into twenty-five rates, um. I know it is, I mentioned that we should at least have an inherent a five percent increase per year just to get ahead of the game, per thing. Um, so basically, what I can do is, what this is set at right now is a ten percent increase. Um, so I can, what, whatever number in, in you guys wanna see, and if you wanna kind of play with it a little bit, um, everything's set for, so if I remove it at a one, that would be a three, three, the same, the point order is a ten percent. Um, so add a ten percent increase right now, uh, your base rate would be going from twelve dollars to thirteen twenty. The sewer, from four fifty to four ninety-five, wastewater from six oh five to six sixty-seven, and storm from seven seventy-five to eight fifty-three. So looking at about a nine percent increase in the bill at a ten percent increase. For someone using five thousand. That kind of makes sense.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, see, a five percent increase.
Well, not quite past that, moving it a little.
Do we know what, and how, Howard Lake, Maple Lake, what their rates are at right now?
Yeah, I looked at those, looked at last week, um. Two of them at very similar rates for their sewer wastewater stuff. And then one of them, I think Maple Lake was different, and I was trying to dig into that a little more, they, I don't know if they didn't have all the information online, or if they changed it, or they just don't charge, um, the wastewater treatment at, um. Cause it looked like the other ones were about at seven, seven forty-one, seven ninety-one.
So what I thought.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think we need to, to be on, on par with that, I think rip that band-aid off there.
At this point, yes, we believe it's still a customer, but we're, we'll be splitting up, and they can do with anyone, I guess, with their wastewater.
I, I think we need to look at just being on par with that and then moving forward with them on what they're doing before we commit. So put us in a nice jump there, I do think with that project coming out.
Well, we're not gonna need less money.
No, that's, that's what I'm saying, like, we can't, we can't just be, we can't look at it and go, how much can we increase to the minimum?
Right.
Like, that doesn't, that doesn't work, it hasn't worked for, for street projects, not gonna work for this.
So this spreadsheet isn't as pretty, um, but it's kind of done here, so let's just take a look at water. This is using the flows, um, in which I asked Dan and Ryan to kind of complete this for me, and I, I went high on it, I don't know what he said, I, you know, know it up. Um, so these are where our expenditure budgets are at right now, just as a preliminary figure that we've kind of discussed. So we have eight hundred thousand that we're planning to spend just in the water fund. So, and you can see, if going with, this would just be, um, a five percent increase, we'll put it seven hundred and fifty-eight. So. We're short thirty-one thousand that, going up to, you know, proposition that we need is a ten percent increase, we're gonna be just over that confidence. Of, you know, by five years.
And that.
So this is, so this is for the sewer, this is where our expenditures are for twenty-five, maybe we need to look, so it's gonna be, sorry.
No, I think this is, this is like a layer, that's all.
So this is for the sewer, by this, there are expenditures that were, you know, preliminary for twenty-five, um, and down here, if you look, so this is, if you stayed with the current rate, you'd be at four seventy-five. It's going to, uh, one percent, five percent, ten percent. Looking at storm, kind of the same thing, same with the current rate, one, five and ten.
Four, so it's not gonna, yeah.
You're never, it never really will, so you're gonna be a lot. Um, and then again, the same with wastewater.
I mean, if we, if we increase the wastewater to what Howard Lake and Annalee are at, and if we look at a ten percent, I mean, it's ripping a band-aid off, but it's also setting us up for future of not having to go as aggressive, correct?
Yep, we, we need it at least, stay the same in the beginning, I mean, we're gonna have a lot of those, you know.
But yeah, like, I think, I think that way, it, we're not looking at, you know, ten percent every year, we're looking at minimal changes. And a lot less of an impact, obviously, the impact's gonna happen next year, but everybody knows the project we have going on. So I think we need, we can't, we can't get behind any of all of that.
No, no, no. Well, that was just another way to kind of look at it with, from our expenditure side.
But there's, yeah, there's a way to, you know, look at that, you know, what seven ninety-three or three seven are at, at the wastewater, and then, and then looking at the ten percent, I think. We, we need to be smart with this, just like we do with the street, I mean, I guess. Be very thoughtful.
Well, maybe we can lock down on, kind of starting things on, we can, I mean, I mean, you should.